...Committee. Are we ready?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, for my committee meeting, I would like to, once again, bring up the east side, the far east side zoning, rezoning requests. This is just to bring it forward in council's memory because we did have several meetings last year and a public hearing about the rezoning, which is rezoning R2 to R1 in various parts of the far east side. And I would like to go forward with this to put it on council's ordinance for next week, for the agenda next week. And I just wanted to open up for a general discussion, whether people had questions, kind of from lost time, miscellaneous. I think that this process has been through numerous discussions. It is a citizen-initiated process. The Planning Commission has recommended that we do rezone it, and we have the maps that have been put forward. If we choose not to follow Planning Commission's recommendations, we can put different recommendations forward on the ordinance, kind of amend the ordinance that I plan on putting forward Monday. It will, however, have to be passed with a supermajority. Are there any questions from council on this?
Might want to explain a supermajority.
Supermajority is six out of seven council members because it is overriding the recommendations from the Planning Commission. Are there concerns, questions? Would people from the audience like to speak to this issue? The reason I brought it up was I felt that I didn't want to bring it up next week because it has been a lengthy vacation for a lot of people. So, I don't like to spring things on people. Questions?
And again, I gave you last, I think during a public hearing, a previous meeting about the section of Athens Comprehensive Plan. Was it Phase Two, of course, 113 and onward, about the east side? Okay. Just so you have that as reference.
And last time we were here, if I recall, there was a concern about an area that was zoned, Zone Two, that they intended to remain Zone Two, but it had been recommended by the Planning Commission that it be Zone One. I didn't know if there was anyone here that would like to remind council of that?
If I may.
Mr. Walker?
I just don't know what you're putting up.
The Planning Commission's recommendation to rezone for...
We are.
As recommended.
As recommended.
No modifications involved.
If council wants to modify it, as is... My course is to put it forward as Planning Commission has recommended. If they want to, as ordinance, send it back, because as a committee member, we can't dictate anything. We have to do it as a council. So, next Monday, if they would like to amend it, then that would be an option for council to do.
Thank you.
Yes, Bill Walker, thank you. I have spoken on this issue twice for the goods that are present tonight, and it's our request that council look at this issue. My clients, as I reiterated, or as I indicated the last time I spoke here a couple of weeks ago, have five lots that it's been proposed to be zoned to R1. They're presently R2. They border on B3 lots, and we have presented to council, and again, I don't want to reiterate a lot of this, but how that's going to impact their property values. And as I indicated, that seems to be of deep concern to the individuals that are proposing this change, that they want to preserve their property values and their property rights at the same extent. The goods wish to preserve their property rights. They bought this property a number of years ago and are not going to be able to proceed with any R2 development such as duplexes, apartments, and so forth. I don't want to reiterate everything we've gone over, but just indicating again, it's going to impact their values. This has almost become an exclusionary issue down there. It's going to be all R1. And where are we going to have the issues of low-income people that can afford to get an apartment, to get a duplex rather than a house? Those individuals that are starting out in life and need these things. But we're creating a whole district that, right now, has some diversity in it into an R1 area. And quite frankly, is this going to continue throughout the areas? If people are coming forward to the Planning Commission concerned about their areas, are we going to change this all to an R1 area, to the exclusion of what I consider to be people that need the abilities to move into these areas? So, I would ask, I could say the court, but I would ask council, just to take into consideration what I have presented to council over the last couple of meetings and our arguments, and ask that they look at particularly the areas that the goods own and modify that to at least keep it an R2 area. And that's what it was proposed to have been at the very beginning when we met in May. Came to those meetings, no change is going to be made. And we kind of, you know, the goods felt that they were safe in their assumption it was going to change R2. And then it comes out in September, one meeting, one meeting, not even known about it, and they read in the paper that they're going to be changed from R2 to an R1. So, that's what we're here for tonight. I appreciate, again, the opportunity to appear before council. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Jeff Dill. I live at 31 Graham Drive, and I represent the group that initiated this process in the first place. And I just wanted to say that I don't object to Bill's request to modify what the Planning Commission recommended. I would hate to see the whole thing sidetracked. And our primary goal is to recognize the existing single-family homes that are already there and rezone them to be R1. And I think that can be done in a reasonable manner and keep everybody happy. And I would hate to see this whole process derailed over, you know, over an issue like this.
Sure.
I recall at a previous meeting, Mr. Walker, that you mentioned that at a meeting of the Planning Commission, there was a map that showed that the properties in question were set at R2, and later that map disappeared, or you can't find it, or didn't show up. You know anything more about that?
No.
Yes, you may approach the bench.
I don't think it disappeared. Paul, do we have that map, or...
We do. I believe it was done by the city planner, Paul Loeb. There were many different versions. We looked at at least three different versions of some of those, so I can get that back to council.
But it wasn't finalized, is what I'm... You're saying that it was just one of several scenarios of possible outcomes, and then come September, a finalized map is presented. Is that correct?
No, and the Planning Commission, as I recall, it was, the motion was made to just, to essentially rezone. It was not done with a map. We had maps that we looked at, but...
We looked at maps of original, some of the petitions that had been put forward were to change some of the business zones into R1s, at one point, or R2s, to make a continuous lot line between the B3s and the R1s as a transition. There were other conditions where we had part, shrunk the R2s down to just a small area. There was some pushback about turning some of the B3s into R2s or R1s. I think the conclusion of the Planning Commission at this time was just to shift the R2s to R1s in general. In other words, and have, if the business people wanted to have a shift, to come back at a later date, I believe was the intention.
And what would be the shift if the business people...
Well, okay, I think, my memory is, I think Mr. Shea, Larry Shea, had some property that was behind his, in fact, one of his buildings, I think straddles an R2 and the B3. Some of the other buildings were pretty close to the zone as well. I often, I don't remember. But again, we decided to just keep it simple and just go with the R2s.
Yeah, Councilman Wright, I guess the point we're making when we went to that May meeting, we had that map that we just presented to you, and there was no objections raised to it at that point, and they were there to speak, you know, to behalf of keeping it an R2. It did not because there was no objections raised to it and so forth, and it was our opinion after we came out of there, there was going to be, remain a...
I see.
An R2, based on the map that they had presented at that time. And then we found out in September that there had been a petition presented to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission, I'm not saying they worked off that petition, it was given in conjunction with, I think, their meeting on, in September 19th, I think it was, that things were changed. Those R2s that we, those five lots we had, were then going to be R1. That's the first, the goods and I knew of that, that change. That's what I'm referring to on that May 5th, or the May meeting. Thank you.
And if I may, that map that you may be looking at, I'd have to look, like you said, there had at least three different... There was a map drawn that showed existing uses remaining, if there were existing uses as an R2, remaining as an R2. I can't speak to this property as in specifics, so...
I think the intent was that if it was just empty property, empty lots, we weren't, we were going to switch it over. It was the present R2 duplexes that we were trying to prevent from being nonconforming. I think that's how, some of the mix that... That was part of the discussion that occurred. I don't think we ended up that way, though. I think we just said, let's wipe out the R2s. If I'm reading correctly, if I remember correctly.
The question I have is, and you may have somewhat answered it, is now I'm interested in whether, whatever agreement or how the ordinance is going to read, will it be all undeveloped vacant lots will remain R2s? And, I mean, what are we looking at here?
It was eliminating R2 as a zone completely in that neighborhood.
So, all the R2s are gone there. We just, makes it easy, just everything that's designated as an R2 right now is now designated as an R1.
Okay, but it sounded like that there was a door that was just opened a minute ago with possibility for...
There was discussion of, there were all sorts of discussions. Okay? Part of it is to, okay, all the duplexes now will become nonconforming in that zone. Part of the discussion was, shall we actually selectively pull those out and make, prevent them from becoming nonconforming? There was other discussion of some of the lots that are adjacent to the B3s that are owned by the same ownership, but empty lots, whether we should put those in the mix or not. That map there, I think, actually shows some incursions into the B3, too. Am I wrong in that assessment? That's the one with the sharpie lines, I think. That's one of the first original...
Correct.
Okay. So, you can see where we started chewing, nibbling into the B3s zones at that point. And now some of the businesses become nonconforming. Rather than to enter into this mix, we just said, you know, obviously the wish is to downzone it, we'll go with the R2s and just take them out. Very similar to what we did on the near east side and the west side many years ago. And even then, there was contention there. I think we drew a line by the West H Street Cemetery for the rezoning there. I don't think, I think we took out all the R2s over in Morris for the near east side when that was happening. And when I say we, I mean the city. I was not involved in the conversation except for the petition for the west side.
Mr. Mayor, I was just, for those in the audience who may not understand conforming and nonconforming, so there are currently duplexes there that are zoned R2.
Correct.
So, can you just explain that a little bit?
They are conforming. Right now, they can, you can have duplexes in an R2 zone. That means a two, two, single fam, two, a duplex, two houses, two households in one house. When it's R1, you only can have one house, single-family house. And therefore, anything is zoned in there basically becomes nonconforming, and it has to conform if it's over 50 or 60 percent renovation. So, in other words, if it burns down, if they want to reestablish an R2 or add on to a certain substantial amount of investment, and you'll have to look at code exactly what that number is, they would have to either get a variance, or they have to rebuild it as an R, as a single family. Example of that is right by Timothy House. The house next door caught fire, it was a duplex, it is now a single-family home. So, the one on Central. There were other occasions where they, things, when you downzone, things, the intent is eventually the grandfather status will disappear. The assumption, of course, is that's what we want to do over time. Many years ago, the B1s were slated to be eliminated, whether it was the Athens Flower Shop or the Village Bakery at the time. Most people would say that was probably not where we want to go now in this day and age. So, things will, you know, and again, my concern's a little bit, when I put this forward and approved on the Planning Commission level, you know, I'm in the middle of this in that sense. I look at the, what the substance of the Comprehensive Plan, which really states kind of preservation of neighborhood but retaining the R2 flavor. You know, that's one side of it. The other conversation that's occurred, of course, is when would you need, on the pro side, getting, most development is in student housing, R3 and above, multifamily apartments, really. At the same token, with an aging population, when you want that grandmother, you know, place, or, you know, that's, you know, family together. And I've talked to people on the far east side, too. I think near Dalton, I ran into a woman who's actually moving, was intending to move out of that area because they needed someplace that they could do a duplex. That, you know, that would be a future need that we may have to address this. Again, we did a broad sweep just because we're trying to keep it simple. But, you know, you have the chance to modify it, I have the chance to veto it if I don't like it. I don't know what a vetoing a supermajority means, probably doesn't work.
That certainly is a concern for mine, is having all different levels of housing. I think that's a concern.
The desire for diversity? Okay.
Both economic, you know, economically. I think the examples you just gave us are really good examples of needs.
I say, it's kind of in the middle of what I want, of where we want to go on this.
If a lot then became an R1, there is still possibility, though, through our code, to rent, but to no more than three unrelated individuals. I mean, it becomes more restrictive in a sense as to what kind of housing unit, as you're saying, if somebody wanted, if a mother-in-law, or father-in-law, or extended family relative moved in, then they wouldn't have the flexibility or maybe the privacy of a separate structure or a duplex, but still that the R1 might be a possibility.
I believe the R1, the way it's written, is actually you can have servant quarters as long as you don't have a kitchen, separate kitchen, I believe. So, if you're talking about, you know, in-law that you don't want to see that much, you can always put them in the basement. They have to come up further to be traded, and the stove, but, you know...
So, but it is difficult because I hear what you're saying, and I hear what you're saying, Mr. Walker, about, you know, trying to provide a lot of housing. I've talked to faculty members who have moved into town as young married couple, and where did they move? And before the mobile homes were eliminated on Carroll Road, you know, they were, they were there. Several faculty member families were there. So, I don't know. And, you know, you're talking about the Comprehensive Plan calling for the conservation of neighborhood conservation areas, but in the lines above it, it does say, you know, R1, R2, and not excluding group homes.
And again, if you look at the map that's on the wall behind you, there's very small yellow. You can see the yellow on the Venus. See a little yellow sort of just down from uptown here and a little slot there on the south side.
It's almost equivalent to the amount of B1s we have, actually, look at the footprint, I suspect. And maybe they just don't fit the categories that are needed anymore.
Well, I think that that's a good point, is unfortunately for some neighborhoods, the development of multifamily and duplex developments have left a bad taste, you know, because they're not necessarily the best developments and such. So, this is a reaction to some of that. I, too, have a, I think that it would be nice to have some kind of intermediate in the future 1.5 zoning, where you have, you know, it's not necessarily duplex, it has mother-in-law structures or such. One thing about the goods is that there's always an option of joining the five parcels together and doing a PUD. There's no rules against that. And that actually may be, you know, a option to do in the future.
Except I believe, we haven't passed that? Okay.
Nope.
There was discussion about limiting the PUDs.
Yes, and that has been a discussion, but it has not come up in council.
Not to this point.
So, I mean, there's always, the PUD process is a very fluid process that gives a lot more, you know, kind of options for both the city and developer. So, that's, and there's always, I mean, zoning is a very fluid process because it's never set in stone. I mean, there are, on Morris Avenue, only part of, you know, the northern, the upper end of Morris Avenue wasn't changed to R1. So, you did have development of different types of housing up there. You know, we are a very dynamic city, and so we need to look at those sort of things in the future. So, I think, though, that this process has been, you know, one that has gone on for a while, a lot of different public hearings, public meetings, trying to accommodate very, various groups of people. So, I think that we need to bring it to fruition with some kind of decision, whether we want to send it back to Planning Council, Planning Commission, or go forward with, you know, amending it, how we see fit sending it back. But I think that that needs to be made as a decision as council, not a committee. I will bring it up on Monday, and we can discuss it further and decide. If council decides to amend it or send it back to Planning Commission for amendments, it's definitely not the end of the discussion. I just want to, it's, you know, I said to the Athens New, trying to find the happy spot, you know, it takes some time. Democracy is very messy sometimes, especially zoning, you know, planning, planning is very messy. So, it's very public participation. That's probably the most public participatory thing that we have in the city. Any other questions, comments? So, I will bring it up as written, Mr. Walker.
I just, in terms of what Councilman Patterson said, and I do appreciate Jeff Dill's comments. I mean, there's no objection from the group that's proposing this, you know, the amendment. I do appreciate that from Mr. Dill coming forward to that. And I would ask and urge the council to accept that. Thank you.
I think that what I will do is bring it forward as the Planning Commission recommendation because that is the normal thing to do. Council decides to amend it, then they can amend it, and it can be read as an amended ordinance with the understanding that it will need a supermajority. People don't feel comfortable with that, want to send it back to the Planning Commission to amend the proposal that's put forward to the recommendation. So, there's like three options. We can pass it, we can, you know, change it, amend it, or we can pass it back to Planning Commission. So, next Monday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, sorry, Tuesday. Tuesday, Tuesday.
Twenty second.
After inauguration.
Next agenda item is another long-running zoning. I love zoning. East State Street zoning designation for the former Columbia Gas property. We are in the final throes of doing what we need to do for this piece of property. This is doing the zoning designation for the piece of property that will be annexed into the city once we designate it's, this is like the last step in the planning process. Planning Commission has suggested that we designate it as M, and I would recommend that we, we accept that proposal, that recommendation for, you know, accepting it as M into the city with M manufacturing, sorry, M manufacturing, which is basically what the other zones around it is designated as.
And you can see that on the map if you look behind you. A little gap right there along East State Street.
A little puzzle piece that we have been missing.
One of the many little puzzle pieces.
That's a big puzzle. Want to let you look underneath the table for? With, for, it will continue the purple as M. So, is there any questions? I know that the people here are to represent the applicants. Is there anything that you would like? Okay. So, I will bring that as an ordinance on Monday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday. Tuesday, sorry. I'm going to be here Monday.
We won't be.
Okay. There's no further discussion on that. The next is another annexation discussion that we will have. This is the beginning of the process for annexation. Annexation, as everybody knows by now, it's a several-step process. This is to Ridgeview, Ridge, is it away, road, Ridgeview? And this has been put in as an application for annexation. First process is for the city to look at issues and discuss in committee what sort of services will be provided. We have the applicants here this evening, and also I know that City Service Safety Director has discussed it with various department heads about this piece of property.
Yes, and we have some questions, so...
Can you come up and introduce yourself?
They need to come up here at the table.
Yeah, well, in front of a speaker.
Is that a speaker?
Yeah.
It is.
Microphone, thank you.
If you do a drum roll, though, it'll get kind of noisy. In other words, yes.
I'm sorry we weren't able to resolve these earlier in the day. The petition appears to be for the 1.75 acre parcel. Yes. And not for the 0.25 acre parcel that's tied continuously and continuously.
It would be, it would be for the whole thing. It's all one lot. I mean, it's intended to be together.
Okay, that's what, how we do that, as they're tied.
Yeah, this, right, yeah.
It would be.
Right.
That answers the first question. So, those two parcels together, and you should, do you have a map? Did you get it?
We had a map before.
Okay, good.
Before holiday.
The other question is, we're, there's some understanding there might be an easement along the east side of your proper to access the neighbor property.
There is, yes, yes.
Okay. So, Mr. Rose's property is not in the city and would not be annexed in with this. It's the first time we've encountered something where you have an easement that might be going through the city onto a county, but we also understand that might be occurring other places in the city, so we're doing just a little bit more research on that.
It's a driveway, right? Yeah.
We do need to see that, that easement, that is recorded. I guess I should have started with, we can indeed provide the water, the, as long as, you know, that gets worked out with the X, which my understanding it is. The sewer, the police protection. When we get to fire, it's a little just too distant for a hydrant, and the one request from the fire chief is to have a hydrant installed somewhere near the property there. There is a cost associated with it, and I don't have an estimate, but I can get that. And we assume it would be... And we assume it would be, well, I guess it would go to Planning Commission for a recommendation for zoning. And then the last thing was about if there's any existing health issue on any septic fields that might be on the property.
No.
May need something from Mr. Hammer that indicates that.
What's currently on the property right now is a house and?
Just a single-family dwelling.
And it's serviced by a septic system.
Well, it's been 15 years since it was inhabited. So that system is just gone. And I've run a sewer line to the city's sanitary manhole, the nearest one, which is right along Route 33 at the corner of Ridgeview and 33. So that, that's taken care of. And the city water, city water and LIACs are both there at the same time. This, this place kind of fed off of the water that goes back to Mr. Rose's place because his parents lived there. And then they, they put a driveway through the place and built a house back there where Murray Rose lives. And then when his parents died, it sat empty for a long time, and he sold it. I'm trying to fix it up. And putting in a septic field is always problematic. The city had a sewer line right there, so it made sense to get it annexed and use that.
Right, and so that's your major reason for annexing the property is to access the sewer?
Yeah, water and sewer, sure.
Now, the surrounding areas is R1 of our county.
And we also have some, I mean, there is city land, I mean, he's.
Well, this is deed restricted to one residence.
And I don't know if you have that Exhibit A that said that deed restriction for the property.
I can get you a copy of that. It also has the easement provision.
So it's the major sticking point is the unusual?
We'd like to see that easement. And secondly, to process, and I have to look at our council clerk, does the applicant need to resubmit to the county to include both parcels? That other .25 has a different, okay, okay.
Okay, that's good.
That's good.
Okay, so we just need the easement literature and.
So, so I think, you know, we should be able to have final answers, resolutions prior to your meeting next week.
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
And that would really be to what services will be provided by ordinance, and it goes to county next.
And then it would need to be released by the county. Now, what, the county needs to have a public hearing, or we, at least one public hearing needs to be?
I have to look at the.
I think it's at the county level.
And so the question is, when is the county, so that, does that process need to happen first or simultaneously to where they're releasing it and we're then approving an ordinance? And when is the county due to release?
I think there's supposed to be some time lapse in between.
Dippy's identified a date already that we have to have.
February 12th, okay.
So, the question is whether we can have the first reading of an ordinance if the, if we know the, that's always a, I mean, the thing is, is that it's not really official until we pass an ordinance. And if we do it after the public hearing at the county level, then it should be.
Right, I would think, process-wise.
It doesn't be approving something that had a.
We need a resolution.
Right.
Granting the services that will provide prior to February.
And then it's the ordinance, accepting.
Okay, resolution.
With the designation of the zoning, it's kind of our acceptance of the annex.
That will come with the after. As we just got to the Columbia Gas one today.
That's one thing, I've been asked several times, and it's like this flow chart. So, so we can put forward a resolution on Tuesday, do you think?
I believe I should have everything resolved.
So one reading resolution? Three reading resolution? Okay. At second reading, we can, because it needs to be done before the 12th, which is the county commissioners, okay?
The other point of discussion, of course, is a hydrant and LIACs water is being supplied.
Yes, it's my understanding that you did get released from LIACs for the one property.
I think so, yeah.
Okay, so that's good to go?
I've given them all the paperwork on that, and I think it's okay. They told me it would be.
That's what city engineer indicated also, so.
So we will introduce a resolution on Monday.
Tuesday.
I am just like so keyed and. Anyway, next week, we will introduce a resolution if council wants to fast-track it. That's the will of council. But on Tuesday, we will introduce a resolution to Tuesday. Are there any more questions or concerns about this particular issue? Do you think that's a doable timeline for city?
I do, and I guess I would like to just state that what Mr. Sturbois has done is gone through the policy process that we've, that's been in place for a number of years in order to have sewer, they say you will attempt to annex. Now, ultimately, since he's already drawn, has the line and put that in at his cost and whatever, he is going to be able to connect to our sewer. It's just whether or not he'll be paying me out of city rates, 150% versus the rates. But my understanding is you want it annexed.
Yes.
There you go.
Thank you. Any other questions, concerns?
Thank you.
Miscellaneous, I have no miscellaneous. You guys have any miscellaneous?
Planning Commissioners, next Thursday, this Thursday coming up.
Thursday. See, that's another thing, it's usually Wednesday. Are you changing the dates?
We've changed it, what, past three months, two months?
Correct, and I wanted to start 2013 and keep that same day.
So now it's going to be on Thursday?
At noon.
That's another thing that I'm always going to say Wednesday.
Okay.
Okay, Thursday, put that down.
Write that down here.
Write that on the Tuesday and Thursday. And people can find the agenda on the website. Thank you. Any other questions, concerns, miscellaneous for the Planning and Development Committee? Thank you.
Chairwoman Fall, now we're going to move on to the Finance and Personnel Committee. The head of that committee is Christine Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have four agenda items tonight. The first one being prior year bills. And sometimes this just happens with the billing sequence that we might have had. In the particular first case, we have medical bills that need to be paid to Caremark. And so it was for services rendered through December 31st. So that first one is a bill for $31,854.39, and that will come from Fund 866, transaction code 300. And as mentioned, we'll pay for prior year's medical bills. The second item for prior year bills are the AEP streetlights. And we have approximately 85, we have an estimate that it will be $8,500. And that would come from Fund 101.112.531400, if anybody's interested in the, the fund number. But that's the general fund, and that's the designation for the streetlights from AEP. Second item, and these are, to my knowledge, these are the prior year bills that we have identified so far, so just those two. And so those are the ones that are greater than 3,000, and so because of that amount, they need to come before council. Second item is the Housing Revolving Loan Fund. And you might remember that in December, we passed several ordinances. One was an agreement with the state to continue the contract for that. And, and that was dated originally to end on 12/31/2014. And then when we got the notice from the state, as I understand what happened, they had an end date of 2015. So what we need to do is amend the two ordinances, the one with the agreement with the state, the other one, it's the managing or administrative agreement with our Hocking Athens Perry Community Action Program. And we need to extend the administrative agreement also to 2015. The next item that I have are appropriations, and there are three of them that we have coming up. One is the final payment to the contractor for the Project 264, which was the Joneswood Terrace Improvements. And the final portion of the amount that's owed to the contractors, $172,8596, and that's going to come from Fund 744. The second item that we have for appropriations has to do with tax incremental financing, or what we commonly sometimes call the TIF fund. And as you might recall, that this is a way in which we, the city raises money in revenues in lieu of actual property taxes. And this TIF fund was used as we did the East State Street improvement some years ago. And so what happens is, the city receives revenue about two times a year. That's about $400,000. It's a little more than that this time. And when that money does come in, 45% goes to the schools, and 55% goes to the city. And at this point, that 55% that comes back to the city, we've been using to pay the loan, pay down on the loan for the community center. So we've got money coming in right now, and for the school share, I believe that is, and that's Fund 593, the TIF improvements Fund, that's going to be $235,000. And then the community center portion will be $250,000 that will be coming due. And the third appropriation that we have is the property tax payment for some properties that the city owns. And these are located on Blackburn Road. And as I understand, they're primarily properties that provide low-income housing in the city.
Yeah, we own three pieces of property, one on Central, two on Blackburn. The Metropolitan Housing Association Authority managed them for us, and they're for low and moderate income.
Okay, great. And the amount that we need to appropriate for these type of taxes that are due is $65,000. And that'll come from Fund 248, excuse me, yes, Auditor Heck.
Can I just add a change to that a little bit? It might be, the taxes are actually about $5,000, $4,500. The other $60,000 is for the other grant monies we have in 248. That, that we are working with Charlene and the mayor's office on an amount. And when we talked the other day, we just threw a number out there of $60,000. So that plus $5,000 for taxes would be a good guess to appropriate. But between now and Tuesday, Char might come up with a more accurate number. They actually spent over $120,000, I think I have wrote it down, $123,000 or something last year. But we don't know that, that that money will be there this year. There have been a lot of changes in CDBG, especially, you know, regarding transportation and different grants. So if that's okay, I'm just throwing that out there, that that, that number might change. The taxes are, we do absolutely need those, because, you know, our bills will be coming out here next month probably. But the other amount, if we can get a more accurate number, I guess I'd appreciate if council just go ahead and appropriate that, rather than, you know, just doing the $60,000.
Sure, so if we have a number other than the $60,000 by Monday, seems reasonable that we could incorporate that into the appropriation.
Yeah, actually Deputy Auditor Ray Haslett contacted Char to try to get an accurate number, and she did come up to our office today and talk to him, and so.
So we have the.
That way when we appropriate, you know, we were just kind of going by last year and putting some money in there, so we wouldn't be caught off guard. But, you know, that amount might double, but it's all.
I have a question.
Grant-related.
So that would be grant money used for, can you give an example?
Housing and, which we've talked about, this chip agreement, that would probably be the main one in there now. We don't have as many grants, well, it just depends, you know, what comes up throughout the year. That we work with them, but we actually do the drawdowns. The money flows through the city, they do the work, you know, kind of.
Just fixing up properties and, right.
And so these, that money would be for, not necessarily for the properties that we already own?
No.
But other buildings?
Homeownership.
Homeownership, I've got it.
House rehabilitation, re.
Good, okay.
We get some income from those properties as rentals that, you know, help with any repairs that are needed.
Okay.
For example, a few years ago, we had to tear down a garage on Central, the garage that was with the house.
Right. Occasionally, something might come up that, you know, the city would have to pay for, but not too often.
Okay. Well, thank you for the additional information and the, and the questions. That helps clarify it. Under miscellaneous, we have two items that I'm aware of. One of them is the note for the Recreation Center improvements, and that's the perfection energy-efficient improvements that were done several years ago at the center. And at the time, we borrowed $350,000. We now owe $270,000. And as you might remember, back in December, where we were looking at other notes that we have come due, this one has come due also with a payment in March.
March 1st.
So what we're needing to decide is, there's, let's see, $945 of interest that's due. The renewal of the note will be .35. And as I understand, city management has made a recommendation that of that $270,000 on the principal that we still owe, that we pay $50,000 down on that. And that, that won't put a horrible strain on the budget, but will help us pay it down. So if that's agreeable, we'll move forward with that amount, the $50,000 on the principal and the $945 interest.
How is interest going to be affected if downgrades happen at the federal level? Does that affect other city-state entities?
Well, I guess I don't know for sure about that and how that all works, but yes, likely. These are one-year notes that roll over, and our interest rate could change. That's another reason not to put off paying this back, you know, our interest rate right now is pretty, really good, it's pretty minimal. However, from one year to the next, that could change. And yes, if interest rates start climbing back up, that will affect our interest rates, as I said, because these are one-year notes. So a year from now, they could want to, you know, double or more.
And this is through a local bank, too?
It is. They give us the best interest rate possible.
Yep, which we definitely appreciate.
Yes, we do.
Thank you. The last item that I have is the need for us to increase the budget. And this is for our expenses that are due to the Southeast Ohio Regional Jail. And this would be from Fund 101. And what we're proposing is a $3,000 increase in that budget line, so that we have the money to cover the increase in prisoner costs charged to city. That rate is going from $51 a day, I believe, to $53 a day. And so the $3,000 should cover us, we hope for them.
Yeah, essentially, this is a guesstimate because we just took a percentage and added what we've spent last year. And I know there's been some dialogue of actually increasing it further, so that, that's, we don't know what's going to happen there. That's up to the jail and how their budget looks. As a multi-cality entity, they have to make their ends meet first.
Any other questions or comments?
I wanted to comment with our treasurer here, if I could ask you a question.
Auditor?
Auditor, I'm sorry, that's what I meant. There's some stuff out there in the newspapers now, but there have been quite a few people talking about this audit. And I just wondered if, for our television audience, if you could just share, just remind folks why we're doing this and why this happened, you know, just briefly, and just.
There's a lot of things that I can't say about this process. People need to remember that income tax information is totally confidential, whether it's the federal level or the local level. And so the amount of information that's provided from either end is pretty minimal. However, we started this process as city auditor, who is over the tax administrator for the city, a main source of revenue. It's, I feel it's my duty to collect all the taxes that are due to us. Obviously, everybody in this room pays all their taxes because you're pretty visible, and, you know, we know that you pay your taxes. The city withholds for you. Not all businesses or companies or government entities withhold taxes on their employees. And unless they are within the city limits, they're not required to. If someone works out of town and their business withholds, such as my husband, who works in Canal Winchester, that is called a courtesy withholding. So there are people who live in the city, and as you know, whether you're a resident, whether you live or work here, you're liable for, you know, city income taxes. And so if you work out of town and your, your employee. And so, if you work out of town and your employer doesn't withhold, then it's up to us to try to find that or for you to report. Because we don't have mandatory filing, it's hard to catch people sometimes. And I know that it seems like a big pain, and there is just no way around that, because for us to ask businesses to provide their withholding rolls and things like that would, you know, almost be a violation of that confidentiality from the other direction. And that way, we could have kept them from getting this letter. However, we just couldn't do that. We didn't provide them our withholding rules for the city even. So, basically, this company, which is one of very few that has access to federal income tax return information, looks into this, and that's why individuals who get the letter should call them. However, you're welcome to call our office and talk to our tax administrator, and she will help you all that she can. And hopefully, it's a little bit of an inconvenience, but the fact is, we, just within the short time since the letters went out, we found four people last year and another one today who should have been paying us taxes and who hasn't been. And the process is just getting started. So, it's basically, you know, our responsibility to do that. Mandatory income tax filings would require more employees for the city. And it's really not practical, we've talked about this years ago and a couple of different times for the city, because so many of our residents are young and go to the university. And they're probably not going to be liable, I don't know, I can't, you know, if you can think forward on that, I can't really say too much more about that. But we would be requiring a lot of people to file that really don't need to. And it would really just turn out to be busy work. And as I said, it would involve employing more people in our office, because we're pretty busy. We only have two people as it is. So, you know, it's our obligation. We need this money. And I, for one, someone who pays all my taxes, does not want, Council, to have to increase our taxes, because we're not really collecting from everyone who should be paying. And so, that's, you know, might sound a little bit harsh, but that's the way it is. I'm paying my taxes, and I think everyone else who should be paying should be. And as I said, I believe that is a responsibility of my office, is to collect the taxes that are owed to us. Do you have any other questions about that?
I just felt like it just needed to be out there again, and reminded, people reminded why...
Why we're doing this.
Why Council did this, why you requested it.
Yes.
So, thank you.
Yeah. One thing I could add is that if someone doesn't have their W-2s but has worked somewhere, they can ask their employer to provide a letter, saying, yes, this person has worked here for 10 years, and we have paid their, you know, income tax. So, they can go that route, too, or they can, you know, do their own thing privately with this company that is vetted by the, you know, IRS, the federal government.
I would also share that, oh, you went ahead and put on their compass, which is their news serve, how you access this information, so, because there's been, it seems to me, a number of people, you know, Ohio University, I assume is one that, well, I'm not allowed to know, with full income tax.
You can say it, I can't.
And his honor got a letter.
Oh, yeah, well, now I have to dig through all my piles of stuff. Since I'm a pack rat, I thought I can find everything. And I really don't know how long you have to keep your income tax stuff, I mean, files. Do you know offhand?
I think they recommend 10 years, but I don't think it's required for that. I think it's more like three or seven to be safe.
Hmm, okay.
But, you know, the IRS, if they decide to audit you, and they have issues, they can go back, as far as they want.
Yes.
Thanks for the recap of this. My question, and this was one of my concerns at the beginning, is how wide of a net is cast? And if the mayor got a letter, how many people are getting letters that don't need to be getting them, and facing the stress and the inconvenience of having to go through a lot of records?
I assume I got the letter for two reasons. One is I do not file. I think I tried, I tried to file two or three times, it always came out zero, you know, no difference. So, and since it's not mandatory, I did not do it. I suspect if you did not do it, that's one flag. The other one, of course, is I transitioned from working at Ohio University to the city, and therefore, at one point, had an overlap, lab tech, as you, you have two employers right now. And that's probably one of the reasons why I would be out there. I don't know how many of you have gotten it. I've talked to some people who have received them, some people say they haven't, so, I haven't done a polling. I know I'll have to dig through, it goes back to 2006. I'll be digging through my little envelopes that I have, there's all the stuff in it.
Let's hope you can find them.
Oh, I think I can.
So, the city doesn't have to chase you down, or the company.
The news is how far we can go back, that's in our city code.
Okay.
However, withholdings, for, on the employer's side, well, that's another whole story, but, you know, if the employer withholds on someone, they have taken their employee's money, and they need to, you know, so I have been, you know, we've gone round and round with businesses that withhold from their employees and then they'll forward it to us.
Right.
So, to me, that one, you know, there should be no, yeah, there should be no statute of limitations on that one. However, you know, we can go back seven years for City of Athens withholdings. And yes, I expected to get a letter, maybe because of my husband or whatever, but his employer actually withholds the school tax also up in Canal Winchester, you know, and so, it just depends. But there are employers here in the city limits that don't withhold. I mean, you would be surprised at how the process works. But if you live here and work in Nelsonville, we can't force them to withhold for you, or an employer up there. So, as I said, that's a courtesy withholding. So, there are people who are working and earning money, who aren't paying. A lot of them don't always know it, but actually, some of them kind of know it, and then they aren't sure, you know, how to come forward. And so, you know, yes, it's an inconvenience. But as I said, it's, you know, it's just another way for us to catch these people, because we don't have mandatory filing.
Is, will it be information that will be available to us when it's finished for this year? For example, how many letters went out? How many people were brought into the tax?
Yes, the letters have gone out in batches, though actually, I should say, I might get one yet, but, and they're going out, this first round has to do with withholdings. If you have income and you haven't paid this, you know, just on your regular income. There will be other letters, rounds of letters going out for people that have Schedule Cs and Schedule Es, that have different types of income, business-type income. So, we'll see what happens. But yes, we will know how many letters have gone out. And we did provide them with everyone in our system that has an active account, as far as that goes, so.
Okay, thank you.
It might help some anyway, I don't know.
I'd like to follow up on what Member Gosny was asking his question, because I think, I know the answer to this, and not only are we going to know how many mailings or how many filings are, not filings, how many mailings went out, how many letters went out, we'll also know how much money was recuperated from it, which was substantial last summer with the amnesty.
Right, when we just did our own local amnesty. So, that gives you an idea of how many people out there are not, and it's true, there are people that aren't aware that we have a local income tax, because, you know, not every entity has them. But, yes, because actually, CCA is responsible, and, you know, they keep a percentage for their, you know, work in that. So, that will absolutely be spelled out, how much they've collected and how much they are getting, you know, paid for their services.
And with the amnesty program, it was close to $52,000 that we recuperated.
We were hoping for 20, thinking it might be more like 10, and that's what it ended up being, so. And the other thing to keep in mind is, this is a way to get people on our rolls. You know, once we get their names from CCA, then they're in our system. And if we don't, if they don't file next year and the year after, you know, then we will send them a letter, and, you know, unless they've closed their business or moved away, you know, we'll remind them that they need to pay their...
And two clarification points. The amnesty program was, was it a one-month program back in June, where we notified people, citizens, we publicized in the paper, and also through city council meetings and committee meetings, that we were making people aware of this new program, and if they did have taxes that they owed, that they could pay with no penalty. And the CCA is the company that then the City of Athens contracted with, and CCA is what Cleveland...
Central Collection Agency, and it's actually the City of Cleveland...
Yeah.
...that started this, because they have such a large tax base. You have to have 250,000 taxpayers to even apply for access to the IRS rolls. And the other thing is, if you respond to the CCA and you don't owe us any taxes, we will never know. You know, we will have no information about your federal income tax return, or know your name or anything like that. We will only get the people who did actually owe Athens city income taxes. So, yeah, so the City of Cleveland is who operates this, and it's, they have an office in Dayton now, and it's becoming a lot more common, a way of, you know, finding taxes. You know, as you said, there are a lot of cuts coming down from the state, and so, cities have to get their revenue where they can. And basically, this is, I know it's an inconvenience for people, but this is money that's owed to us. And like I said, we've got five people who've called our office and do actually owe us. And then, of course, we have to refer them back to CCA. And there are quite a few people, or several people, who have called just to see if it's on the up and up. And, you know, I don't blame them for that at all, and that's fine, we can say, yes, it is. Because even though we put it out there on the radio and the newspapers, and, you know, not everybody sees that, so. Hard to believe, not everybody watches our meetings and doesn't know that.
What's wrong with that?
There are some who don't.
With that, we'll close the finance committee meeting.
Chris?
Yes, oh, one more, sorry.
Just a couple, two different things. If you remember, the IT company CGI, we're finishing up our, we've been going back and forth with the tax abatement, and that's part of the finance, that's why I wanted to mention it. We'll be signing that sometime in the next week. We went back and forth with the language, no substantive changes. And again, this is abatement for six years, 60%. The other thing I wanted to mention in parallel, tangent with that, is CGI will be doing a, what would you call it, a...
Job fair.
Job fair, I guess, yes. That'll work, January 23rd at Walter Hall. You'll hear more about it before it's all done, but the fact is, you go online to their CGI.com and put the application, but they'll be having, part of our package was the system and the job search, as well as Ohio University. So, we'll be at Walter Hall the 23rd, that's Wednesday, the day after city council. So, I'll bring it up next time, too.
Okay, good, thank you.
Just so you know, it'll be between 9:00 and 4:00 there.
Okay.
And you'll hear, I'm sure there'll be information out on the, you know, newspaper and everything else, but I thought I'd bring it up, just so you know that this is moving ahead slowly.
Great.
Okay? And that's all I have.
Good to hear. Good to hear of possible jobs for the community. Okay, I think that's all the items.
We'll move along to Transportation Committee, Chair Ilar Gosny.
Thank you, and good evening. We have a few items to cover tonight. I don't anticipate any of them will take too much time. And the first one is regarding one of my favorite events of the year in Athens, and that is the International Street Fair. It's moving this year, due to the semester change, I believe. So, instead of May, this will be held, this is planned to be held April 20th. That's, of course, a Saturday, as it generally is. This is brought to us by the Office of International Students and Faculty Services, in conjunction with the International Student Union at the university. And we will simply have ordinance prepared for next week to close the streets and suspend parking. I don't believe there's anything else involved in setting this up for us. Yes, Member Reisner?
Same location, same venues, same good food.
Should be the same show.
Same show.
Additional trash pickups?
Got it.
Duly noted. So, we'll be seeing an ordinance to get the city ready for that event this spring. Member Butler?
Thank you, Mind Reader Gosny. Do you know, City Service Safety Director, if the same amount of blocks or number of the street surface will be closed? I know there was some concern last year from a few owners of businesses, that there was a lot of empty space, and that that might have led to some debauchery.
No, it was because the Number Fest was the same day. It's not.
Okay.
You're sure?
As of a discussion this afternoon with the police chief, at this point in time, the Number Fest has moved further up in April, but it could conflict with other events, but that's, and you're right, this, what I would call the second half of Court Street, it tends to trail off there at the end, but, anyway, I think removing that element should make this a better event.
Sure, I'm just sharing something that a business owner had shared.
So, right now, we close two blocks.
Right, as we have traditionally done.
Thank you.
Okay, we will proceed with that next week. The second item is concerning the Richland Avenue South project. So, this is Richland Avenue from Gary Lane, essentially where we finished the roundabout work, to extending down to the Y. And this is a pretty bold plan from our Engineering and Public Works Department. It's about a $3 million project that's been proposed. And quite a bit of work has occurred already, not a lot of cost so far relative to the entire project. This is something that would begin in July of 2014, assuming that all the funding can be put in place and awarded by that point, so keep your fingers crossed. Currently, we have roughly $1 million, it's not $1 million, $735,000 that's been awarded in grant money for this project, and it's sort of in waiting to see if we can make up the rest to be able to do this project. Some of this is, of course, local funds. We're required to pay all design costs regardless of where the grant money would come from. And I believe, can that include, our local match can include in kind for these types of grants generally?
I believe portion of, on this one, this first stab at it will go just as far as Canterbury, if we can locate those additional. We do actually, although, I'm sorry, have about a million in funding now through transportation enhancement.
Oh, it is a million.
And this will be the bike lanes and looking at access and...
Disregard that $735,000 comment, that was for a different project. So, we do have a million in funding that's been secured for this project. And you mentioned bike lanes, improvements to the roadway for pedestrians, bicyclists. Lighting will be worked on, as well as the water lines and stormwater drainage. So, a pretty comprehensive revamp of that corridor.
It'll be tricky.
Will be tricky, especially with, I guess, limited access and the number of businesses that are operating in that section. They survived the roundabout, though, so.
They did.
So, what we need for this will be authorization for design and engineering work, and an LPA agreement with the state. Paula, does that sound...
Correct.
Okay. You threw me off there for a second. So, we will need to move forward with that next week in order to get this project ready to apply for other grant money. And that brings us to the next item, which is the Small Cities Grant, and we'll have comments and questions as, oh, go ahead, Member Butler.
Well, just along the lines of Richland Avenue, if this is an appropriate moment.
Yes, absolutely.
Member Gosny mentioned the improvements, including pedestrian, bike pedestrian efforts, lighting, waterline drainage improvements. This is a huge project, and I think everything we can do as community members, as elected officials, those of you in TV land, the newspapers helping communicate the overall intensity of this project, because it's similar to the roundabout. It will try people's patience in the process, but the end project, the end product, will be super, and I think a huge improvement. We've received, many of us over the years have received complaints about the disrepair of Richland Avenue, the sidewalks are crumbling, it's not pedestrian-friendly, ingress egress. There's a lot of challenges in that area. So, I think, again, this is going to be a wonderful improvement, and having a public works director in charge of the overall project will aid us in tackling many of these things at once, with the water lines and the streets, so, yeah.
Thank you, thank you for those comments. Any, yes, Member Patterson?
This may get answered when you get into the small city grants, but the question that I have is, how far along is the design process? Will there be public hearings on the designs? And I guess the biggest question that I... And I guess the biggest question that I have is, for those of you who know what a complete street is, is complete street part of this design as you're going through?
Complete street is indeed the theory behind what we're looking at. We have had public meetings, I believe a number of you were there at the Richland, or at the OUN for just conceptual, we've put money through a safety study that actually led to us getting these grants, as it were. So, the next step is indeed to bring on the design engineer and put forth those dollars as we go to do that. And there will be a public participation process in that, too.
And we did, as I recall, at the OUN, yes, there were several council members there and also business owners along South Richland. And we got a lot of good feedback and positive input on what they think would work, might work. And I know that Andy Stone is an engineer and the Public Works Director also has been listening to those comments and trying to incorporate that, so.
Yeah, I would say the public comments did impact what the current proposal entails quite a bit, I would think.
They didn't like the idea of another roundabout. Or left in only, or what is right ends only. So, all that has kind of been removed from the table.
But it would be a dramatic improvement and we can see that there's quite a bit of money that we still need in order to be able to afford this project. And so, the city would like to apply for a Small Cities Grant, which is federal money administered through the State of Ohio Department of Transportation. And this is for cities of our size or smaller. There are 58 cities in Ohio that can apply for these grants, so it can be competitive. There are quite a few entities that can go for this money. And there's about 8 million total for the state generally each year. And so, there's no guarantee, but we would certainly, I think, be competitive because of how far along we are in the design of this project. And our city does very well at chasing after these grant opportunities. And so, this would be an application that's due March 1st. And so, we would put an emergency clause on this probably and, or definitely, and introduce it for first reading next week. And we should be able to go through three readings in case anything comes up that we would need to modify. Have more questions or comments on that Richland project?
Again, we've approached trying to get grant money before, so we keep trying to plug at it. This is something that's been ongoing since, you know, when we started doing the roundabout, trying to complete it all the way through. And of course, this summer, we'll be impeding the upper part of Richland Avenue with the Oxbow Bridge. So, hopefully, it'll all be a nice finished product when done.
Thank you. So, the next item is the Columbus Road Bike Path Spur. And this is something that we did receive a large grant for. This is the 735,000 that I mentioned earlier. This is for the Bike Path Spur that will connect that section of Athens to the rest of Athens without having to climb a huge hill if you're either on foot or bicycle or some other type of transportation, like rollerblades or something. So, with this project, it's on the play right now, we've been working on it. We have, it's a little ways off to begin construction, it's a July 2014 project, but there will be right-of-way issues that we anticipate, as well as making sure that we meet all environmental regulations. There's a lot of water in this part of the town, so we need to make sure that all the construction will meet all environmental regulations. So, we need to move forward with the design of this very soon. So, this is something else, we would need an authorization for design engineering by, is this, we don't have a hard deadline on this, so it doesn't, it will not need emergency or anything?
No, but it will take time, especially to get the engineering in place and the environmental regulation, as I say, it's spanning a river, so.
Yeah.
I may come back and need the emergency clause on that because the funding is in place, but we'll see. I'll let you know. Yes.
This is a project, I want to make sure everyone is aware that the city is investing quite a bit of money in ourselves if we move forward with it, which I think we should. The grant pays for up to 80 percent of construction costs, the city has to pay for all the design and the 20 percent, or anything that runs over, which can happen from time to time. So, it is a significant investment by the city in this bike path connection.
Do we envision utilizing our gas station site?
The old gas station site.
Possibly, but that's still under discussion. We are also still awaiting the final closeout report from KEMON that will be submitted to the state. As soon as I get it, you'll get copied on that, so.
Great.
At the very least, the gas station will be used as a staging here for construction. At the best, we could see holding on to it for a park and ride, we're not sure yet. A lot has to do with the rights way we're going to end up approaching, coming across on Columbus Road or Columbus Circle Drive. There's some combination there.
Any questions or comments on the Columbus Road Bike Paths? It's been many years in the making, I think a lot of different people have thought about trying to find a way to connect the bike path to that side of the city. And this is finally a way we can do it, I think. So, we'll be moving forward with that legislation as well. Is there any miscellaneous?
No, sir, other than we will be calling a Green Fleet Committee meeting for 2013 purchases here.
One update, if I may. Paula, you've been working hard to set up a meeting with AEP.
Oh, yeah, they changed the date, did you see that?
Yeah. And so, we did have a meeting scheduled for, a meeting with AEP and myself, and I think Member Patterson was going to sit in on the mayor's office, is the biggest part of it. We did have something scheduled for later this month, but one of the AEP employees was unable to make it, so we'll be looking to do that sometime near the middle of February, I would, I hope. Just to keep everyone updated on that. And that's everything that I have for Transportation.
I have one comment.
Yes, please.
If Member Patterson isn't available, I would like to sit in on that meeting because I know we don't want more than two there, so. So, if something comes up, let me know.
Certainly, thank you.
I'll be an alternate.
Okay, moving on to City and Safety Services Committee, Chairman Kent Butler.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of brief items here. First is the Safe Routes to School Season Five Grant. Again, we're very fortunate to have been able to participate in this many seasons of improving our pathways and pedestrian walkways to the schools. Again, this started a number of years ago and we're really fortunate to have been able to participate in this many seasons. The upcoming projects that are, potential projects that we're looking at would include sidewalk sections completed on Slaughter, Clark, West Hills, and I believe State Street. Possible estimated cost on this is around 150,000 with the city, as well as the Department of Transportation and the State of Ohio School grant funding process. A second project as well would be stair construction, which I believe during our tours, we've looked at this. It's an abandoned alley, is that correct? And this is in the Merkel Street area, so this would connect Grosner to Franklin, correct?
Thank you.
Yeah. So, that would be a vast improvement to the current state of that pseudo-abandoned alley. That would be approximately a $40,000 project, again, with the city and the Safe Routes to School grant. And we'll have more details on that cost split, is that correct?
Right, by Tuesday. It may be as he goes back and looks at, because I think the 40,000 seems pretty low for the Merkel stairs, that we would maybe put more money towards that and possibly a smaller component on the sidewalks and the other rooms. Hopefully, there's a season six, so stay tuned.
Would you mind repeating the Slaughter I heard?
Correct. Slaughter, Clark Street, West Hills, First Street, and then Lancaster Street would fall into that project, correct?
Correct.
So, the State Street, and I'm guessing that's West State? Is that maybe perhaps improvements to some of the sidewalks that are crumbling, maybe near the...
Middle school?
And/or cemetery, I know there's some damaged sidewalks there.
Yeah, cemetery is on your port, too.
It's just a little more, when we put those two together, it's a little more than the funding will be, so we'll just have to look at dollars and estimates.
Well, actually, I don't...
On Tuesday. Because we do, that's due March 1st, too, like you said, the application.
Member Patterson?
On the stairs and possibly some of the sidewalk improvements, is lighting in the mix, especially lighting that meets the ordinance on light pollution?
And I think that's a great question. This is something, again, lighting has been an issue that we've discussed on a number of our tours and perhaps the Service Safety Director might better be adept at answering that than myself.
Well, those stairs are getting more and more costly. I'll put down lighting, but I am not going to be in attendance at the Dark Cities presentation tomorrow that they're putting on at the library.
Where they can beat us up about street lights.
So, we need to be mindful if lighting is going and that we have the lighting that's aiming down.
We do, we probably, we want to diffuse it, yes.
There's, yeah.
Good lighting, we get it. Lighting, good neighbor.
And there is good lighting, you know, is what came up. And the mayor, you were there on the safety tour as well, that, well, Paula was there as well, that it was identifying safety, you know, street lighting was a big issue, but being mindful of the fact that there is a light pollution ordinance, that we don't want to put in lights that just look nice and are, you know, messing up the skyline in terms of keeping lighting down.
And Member Patterson is referencing, for those of you that may not know, or those of you out there in TV land, Member Patterson is referencing, not only do we go on street tours, but we want, a number of us went on an evening night tour of neighborhoods and areas of the community that have been potentially deemed as safety threats or and/or poor lighting conditions. So, that was something that is of concern, these pathways were addressed in that area as well.
I would just add that I don't think the ones on the Grosner steps are hooked up yet, but I think that's an excellent example of what you're talking about, once we see those connected.
We have a work order into AEP and they just haven't gone to it.
Right. That's nice design on those lights. I'm assuming they'll fit all the...
They're fairly, well, I shouldn't say that loud.
Are they LED? I don't know.
I believe so.
I think they are LEDs.
And they should withstand adverse conditions, how's that?
Yeah.
Not to present the challenge.
Yeah. So, I think that'll be a model for our future if that works out well. I think that's a nice model.
Meaning, moving towards the LED or and/or?
Well, the way these are designed on this.
Downward. They shoot downward.
Okay.
This is what you want on stairs.
Just the location of these stairs, they would, if they're constructed, they will connect to the existing stairs that continue on up to...
Fairview.
Fairview?
That's correct.
Other than crossing the street, but we'll address that.
We put stairs on a street, but most people don't like it.
A little bit of...
It could be a speed pump.
Okay, thanks. It seems like it's a great location for something like that.
And the stair projects that have been already tackled as part of the State of Ohio School, I think, have been done very well, professional, handrails, solid.
Ones by West Elementary, I'm impressed with.
Correct.
Really nice, very nice.
Wonderful. Any other comments on this particular issue? Okay, moving on then to the ODOT pending projects, the Ohio Department of Transportation. Pending projects, first off is looking at resurfacing what loosely is referred to as Albany Road at the end of Richland Avenue, the Y there, moving up towards where Richland Avenue and then this Albany Road connects to the US 50. That section of property, or that road is on the slate, listed to be resurfaced. And, correct me if I'm wrong, the city of Athens has a shared cost of expenditure there, 36,000 with ODOT, is that correct? Okay.
Correct, city limits.
And then additionally, another rehabilitation project would be the Athens 682 Bridge over Margaret's Creek. And perhaps you have more details regarding...
That's the bridge between the railroad tracks and Oxpege Road and 56, there's a bridge there. I think it, logistically, it's got to be a little bit difficult because we run all traffic flow down to one lane for that duration.
What else do we need to know?
Just the fact that, you know, ODOT is very aware of the issues in terms of us being able to access and provide emergency services to that far end of town, so they are going to allow one-way traffic, but there's also the railroad crossing, there's just a number of, and they're selling this in June, we're assuming they want to get it done prior to maybe school starting again in the fall, but it's going to take a bit of time, it's going to be rather disruptive. And we'll try to stay as involved as possible to get the word out to the traveling public. But the bridge is in poor condition and this needs to happen, so. And they are paying for it, so, we all are paying for it.
What is the cost on that, again?
Our, you're saying that the cost would be covered by Ohio Department of Transportation?
It's their project, it's all their project.
Do we have a dollar amount as to what that project's going to...
I don't think I saw it in the paper, no.
Yes, yes.
I think the question we are concerned about, of course, is that you have railroad traffic there, they're going to be putting a light, traffic light in there to, you know, you and I, when we look down to one lane, what has to happen there is you have to go back and forth and you really don't want traffic building up in one direction, onto the railroad tracks, on the other direction into 56 or West Union, into section, so. And that is a large commuter section right there. We'll probably have to, a staff meeting, Andy was talking about having to, you know, change the rotation of lights and how they are scheduling it at that point, but that's, as I say, we're working with them.
Member Reisner, a comment or question?
Have the designs for this new bridge been finalized? Are they going to be for a bicycle lane like they did with the one at Russell Hocken?
This is all ODOT's project and so, they do have a finalized, and I did not see any by...
This is actually a construction plan, I think, right here, rather than the actual final product.
Now, the idea for, is if we're successful in that grant, that we come across the railroad bridge, you know, or, some people call it the path to nowhere right now, and then connect through that land and then find a good crossing there, as opposed to over the bridge. We can ask ODOT how far they are in the review, but again, this isn't our project, this is something they've already...
Exactly. Ask them nicely.
That's okay.
I know you would, anyway.
And briefly, if I may, I think this is valid and important. Oftentimes, when we're passing legislation here, we may not be able to conceptualize or visualize what was really accomplished over the course of the year. And Andy included this in an email to us, and so, I would, I'd like to share this with everyone so that we get sort of a list in our heads and out there about what was accomplished. So, there was a lot done in 2012, starting with the North Court Street Storm Tunnel Replacement and Re-bricking Project, followed by a successful bidding and the start of the Oxbow Bridge Rehabilitation Project. The Wastewater Treatment Plan Project Design, Safe Routes to Schools Seasons Two and Three, which include, we talked about earlier, West Elementary Stairs, the Armory Stairs, Shannon Walk and the Miller Walkway, that's going in there Arts West. Ransom, Harris, McGuffey, Joneswood, Riverview Terrace Waterline Replacement Project. The Grosner Retaining Wall and Sidewalk Drainage Rehabilitation. That's huge, too, and that was on the list for a long time. Grosner, Franklin, East State Street, Morris Sidewalk Repairs, Hickory Street Waterline, then the 2012 Annual Paving, so all the streets that receive new asphalt over the course of the summer and fall. Completion of the Wastewater Treatment Plan Energy Efficiency Project. West Union Street Waterline Design. And then lastly, completion of the Columbus Circle, Columbus Circle Access Road Improvements. So, it was a busy year for the Public Works Department and we were all part of that and it's a lot.
And I would just add, there were several disasters that happened that they had to deal with as well, including the, you know, the boulder and the, you know, other storm lines or water lines that blew up and had to be redone and several projects. And I'm grateful because many of these projects were done in the third ward and it's just looking so much better.
And realize, some of these have been leveraged with outside grants. Other ones, of course, some of the road projects are a result, of course, of that 0.1 percent income tax increase we bumped up last year. So, this is the result of what you're seeing there. We still have more projects to do, as designed for the Wastewater Treatment Plant, the West Union, which will not get done this year because you can't close down three entrances to the city at one time. So, we've got a lot on our plate this year as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Member Pappy. Oh, Member Gospin?
That's, I think that's an impressive list of what the Engineering and Public Works Department has... Department has been able to accomplish this year, and I think probably, of course, because I'm one of the people up here that voted for all of these, I think it was a wise use of the income taxes that we did collect from the citizens. And I've heard positive feedback from several community members on some of these improvements that we've done, mostly regarding streets and things related to that this year, so.
But the mayor's comment about...
This past year.
The mayor's comment about leveraging our money with state money and other grant funds is, has been invaluable, and it's made it possible. And it's because of our, the people who work for us.
Absolutely.
And remember, I still want in the mix of some things we do, is assessments for some of the sidewalks and streets if need be. So that's another way to spread out the money further. In particular, we did the assessment pass for sidewalks, which is worthwhile. Not a lot of money, but, and it's a lot of work, I know. Thank you, Debbie. But at the same time, this is one way to make dollars go far.
Any other questions? Remember, this was not a voting session. There were a lot of discussions that we had that we will continue into a meeting, when's our next meeting?
Tuesday.
Thank you, and we are adjourned.